This conference will now be recorded.
All right, Tom, the floor is yours.
Well, we're gonna do a roll call.
Let's do it. Trustee Gilbert. Gilbert presently reader.
Present.
The reader present, Abdis. Abdis absent. Vanes. Absent. Barandis. Absent. Burns.
Here.
Present. Jones.
Here.
Present.
Okay, thank you. Next step is approval of the agenda. Anybody have any adjustments or changes proposed?
None from staff.
Hearing none, we'll move on to pledge of allegiance. Deborah, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I'd rather not. My husband's still asleep. I'm trying to be quiet.
Okay, I will, I will do that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. I probably botched that, but the intent's there.
All good. Let it be noted to the record that trustee Abdis has joined the meeting. Item 1.5, conflict of interest. Any trustees who potentially have a conflict of interest on anything on the agenda can go ahead and address that now. Okay, hearing none. On item 1.6, so item 1.6 is a little bit different, but on advice from general counsel, we should take this item up first, and this has to do with AB 361. So in order for us to continue to meet virtually, we need to review and consider adoption of the resolution that's provided in the packet and allows us to, AB 361 in the packet identifies some exceptions to the Brown Act. After the governor's executive order was terminated at the end of September, now if we want to continue to meet virtually, we have to adopt this transition resolution today in order to continue the rest of our agenda today. If this resolution doesn't get adopted, then we have to suspend any further business for today. Moving forward, probably at our executive committee meetings, as long as the pandemic's going on and we still want to meet virtually and have the benefits of AB 361, probably at the executive committee meetings because, at the executive committee meetings, we'll probably need to make into a special board meeting in order to adopt another resolution, which gives us another 30 days to meet virtually. So it'll kind of be, you know, this back and forth of board meeting, executive meeting, board meeting, executive meeting, as long as the pandemic's going on and we still want to meet virtually. And so this resolution essentially gives us the freedom to go ahead and continue our meeting today virtually with a transition to adopting a resolution at our next, well, within 30 days. We only have 30 days. So it would be at our next executive committee meeting, which would be a special board meeting, and then we're covered for the November board meeting. So Rebecca, if you have anything to add, feel free, or any of the trustees have questions, please, please let me know.
No, that's, that's a nice summary, Kevin. I'll just note that we appreciate your patience with what we know is a clunky process. These repetitive resolutions and approvals are born of the fact that in order to continue using the remote meeting exceptions, you need to adopt a resolution every 30 days. And unfortunately, because of, because half of the months don't have, only 30 days have 31, and because of our meeting schedule being on the first Friday or second Friday, we, we don't consistently meet within the 30 day limit. So we're gonna keep moving along in that pa- fashion.
I'll move the adoption of the resolution.
I'll second.
Motion by Burns, second by Abdis. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motions approved. Resolution 10, or whatever, 2021 1001 is approved. Onto our next item of business would be a presentation by Rick Reinhardt with MBK Engineers. Rick has been working extensively on our SWIFT program, and we wanted to give you guys an update this morning. So Rick, do you have a presentation? Do you want me to make you the presenter?
Please.
One second here. All right, Ricky, you got it. If you're not familiar with GoToMeeting, Ricky, yeah, there we go.
Morning, board members. I'm Rick Reinhardt with MBK Engineers. And as Kevin said, we've been working with your staff over the last couple of years. As the Natomas Levy Improvement Project has resulted in an expanded footprint for the Sacramento River East Levy, it's giving us flexibility in how we're dealing with waterside encroachments. As you might be aware, there are hundreds of waterside encroachments, primarily landscaping, that are not in compliance with your current O&amp;M manual and the Central Valley Flood Protection Board's Title 23 requirements. And so today, I'm gonna walk you through the approach we've come up with to ease those requirements and then what's gonna be required for bringing the levy, those remaining encroachments into compliance with the new relaxed standard. So our goal is to bring the Sacramento River East Levy into compliance with the state and federal requirements that are laid out in Title 23 and an updated O&amp;M manual that we're working on. So as I started construction of the adjacent levy upstream of power line, and we have a widened oversight levy downstream of Powerline Road has given us more flexibility in what we think is required for meeting the safety requirements, the inspection, operation inspection requirements of the Sacramento River East Levy. And so with the construction project, we needed to update the O&amp;M manual. And we proposed to the Central Valley Flood Protection Board and the Army Corps of Engineers a relaxed standard that would still allow RD 1000 to operate and maintain the levees, but recognize the reduced risk by having a much wider footprint for the levy itself. There are hundreds of encroachments on the water side of the levy, and this is gonna allow us to shrink down what would be needed to be in compliance as compared to the existing operation and maintenance. So the, the operation and maintenance manual lays out the, what's required. And to maintain eligibility in the Core's PL 8499 program, program that allows the Corps to come in with 100% federal funding and recover after a flood event, repair damage, if the levees failed, to repair that failure. It requires the, the local maintaining agencies to prepare what's called a system-wide investment framework. And, and it's called a SWIFT for short. That SWIFT lays out RD 1000's plan over time to bring the levy into compliance with the core standards. And those core standards are identified in the O&amp;M manual. One of the things that we need to focus on in the near term is with SAFCA, the state and the Corps finishing up construction of the improvements to the Natomas Levy, we're gonna have to certify that levy as meeting FEMA standards as well as the state's ULDC standards. So we've gone through, we've evaluated all of the waterside encroachments against the new standard, the relaxed standard that's in the update to the O&amp;M manual. And we've identified what we're calling high hazard encroachments. These are encroachments that impede the ability of the district to operate and maintain the levy and need to be addressed before the levy system can be certified. The levy system is scheduled to be certified in early 2025. So that gives you a sense, we've, we've got just about three and a half years to address these high hazard encroachments. Working closely with your staff, we've gone through and assessed all of these encroachments. We put them into categories of hazards. Category zero and one are the ones we've identified as high hazard. As you can see from the table, we've got a total of 98 high hazard vegetation encroachments, and we have four fences. And I'm gonna walk you through some examples so you can visualize what these are. Of those 102 out of compliance, or encroachments, we've got a total of 99 parcels, meaning that some of the parcels have both the fence and vegetation on it. These are examples of high hazard vegetation. We want, the O&amp;M manual has a clear zone three feet from the fog line. The fog line is the white line along the edge of the road so that staff can safely walk outside of the travelway for vehicles. And so these are examples where there's dense vegetation within that three foot zone. This is also an example of the, the staff can't see through the vegetation to know what's happening on the water side of that levy. Compliance isn't removal of, of all the landscaping. It is pushing the landscaping back three feet, but then having clear windows that the district staff can see through, either by having slots in hedges or having the hedges trimmed up off the ground. This is an example of, on the left, of a fence that meets Title 23 requirements. There's, there's not a problem with the fence, but because they've come through and put a hedge behind it, we don't have the visibility concern. And so this is listed as a vegetation encroachment that's high hazard, not a fence encroachment that's high hazard. The fence on the right is a fence that's identified as a high hazard encroachment because of the slots in the chain link. The chain link fence is allowable, but the slots need to be removed so that the district staff can see through the fence, see what's happening on the other side of that fence.
Hey, Rick, real quick on that last slide there. While the fence on the left is not identified as high hazard, it still needs correction down, down the road at some point, because it's not, you know, it looks like it's about two feet off the fog line, and the standard is a lot further than that. I think it's 10 feet. But in the high hazard to get levy recertification, our main issue would be the vegetation.
Right. We characterized fences with vegetation behind it as the vegetation being high hazard, not the fence.
Correct.
There are a couple of fences that are within three feet, but they're 2.5 feet from the edge of the fog line.
Yeah.
You know, we, we did not identify that as high hazard. We said two and a half is close enough. You know, there is some, some judgment that needs to go into it. But new encroachments, you're right, that, that are issued, and, and over time, these, these will need to be dealt with and taken out of, out of this zone. And so this was intended to just be an overview of, of what we're gonna be doing over the next couple of years. We've started our work with the Central Valley Flood Protection Board. You have a flood maintenance assistance program that is providing state funding to augment your O&amp;M activities. The district's gonna be working with the property owners on educating them, bring them into, bring them into compliance or offering to bring these into compliance. And then ultimately, if, if you're not able to work with the property owners, then they'd be turned over to the Central Valley Flood Protection Board for enforcement. So that's, that's the extent of my presentation. Kevin or Gabe, anything that you want to add on?
Yeah, I, I do want to add on that our intent with the flood maintenance assistance program, we were notified that we were granted the award for next year, and we have about $470,000. In working with Allen Strategic, our outreach team, my intent is to start in the next couple of months here, educating the high hazard vegetative encroachments that need to be, you know, need to be mitigated, start educating them and use some of the flood maintenance assistance program to do the vegetation removal. And so like the hedge on the left there, you know, we would accept, you know, not a complete clearing of that hedge, but visibility about, you know, the hedge trimmed to the standard size of, you know, the, the columns of the, the fence posts. You know, if it's spaced every 10 feet and it's a width of two feet, we're okay with that. So what we want to do is use the FMAP funds to have a contractor come in and after consulting with the property owner, of course, demonstrating how the vegetation needs to be maintained into the future. And so I think we can leverage the funding that we're getting from the state to make significant improvements to those 100 high hazard encroachments and be well ahead of the game come recertification time. So that's our intent as staff and leveraging the funds that we're getting from the state to do this work.
All right, this is Chris. I had a question. So Rick, you were talking about, and Kevin brought it up. Safety for staff is not a high or considered a priority, it sounds like? Or it's not as high as the visibility priority on that?
As far as the encroachments, Chris, I mean, safety is always a priority for our employees. But as far as this program and I, you know, getting the high hazard encroachments taken care of, these are what we're determined as being the highest hazard as far as levy safety goes and having the visibility to ensure that the levy's not compromised.
And then you talk about fit map. We can only use that to help, help them out. We're not gonna be, are they? I'm just trying to figure out, what are those funds available for? Is it, will they be able to help the homeowners move their fences back? Or is it just kind of demonstration? We show them how, has to be kept, up kept, and then go from there?
Yeah, so the FMAP funds cannot be used for any construction purposes or fence relocation. We can use it for vegetative remove, or vegetation removal. And so that's why, and fortunately for us, you know, most of these high hazard encroachments are vegetation. So we're able to use that, those funding mechanisms for them. I mean, if, if the landowners, if after consultation with them, you know, don't want to maintain their vegetation to the standards that we established and they'd rather have it removed completely, we would do that instead and then that, you know, complete abatement of that encroachment.
And that, yeah, because I had a question I was gonna ask. We submitted that back in August. What, what's, last year, what's the current status with the Corps on the approval of SWIFT?
Rick?
Yeah, the, the first thing that needs to happen is the O&amp;M man, the supplement to the O&amp;M manual needs to be adopted. Corps staff has finalized it and it's going through their chain of command for signature and, and final approval. Unfortunately, they're just backlog right now. We think it's gonna be a couple of months. And then after that's approved, then the SWIFT can be approved, because a SWIFT is based off of complying with this updated supplemental O&amp;M manual.
Thank you.
The implementation of the removal of the encroachments doesn't have to wait for that implementation. It's not gonna substantially change anything regarding the encroachments.
Well, I think Nick brought this up in the last meeting and the one before, but I, I think early and often outreach to the landowners is going to be critical. And the sooner we can start talking to them, and I would hope we talk to everybody, not just, you know, the ones that have problems. Just that way people know going forward, the, the easier, or I should say easier, but the better will be the, so that's all I would ask.
Now that we know that we have FMAP funds and we know what we're dealing with as far as the number of encroachments. In fact, we have a, a meeting with Allen Strategic on Tuesday next week to go over this, our financial plan, and a couple of other things. And, you know, fortunately, we have probably six to seven months to do a really strong outreach campaign before we actually get the funding agreement approved and signed and executed. Typically, that doesn't happen until, you know, April or May, and so we're gonna work.
We lost it, Kevin.
Sorry. The doorbell rang. Dogs are barking. But we have a couple of months, you know, six or seven months to be able to do a really strong outreach campaign before the executed funding agreement comes into place. And then we have the funds to do that. Typically, on the FMAP, we've been getting started with actual vegetation removal about September every year. So we can, we can really do a good outreach effort in the next, you know, half a year.
Kevin, if I could just add, I just want to reinforce that these encroachments aren't in compliance with today's O&amp;M manual. So the standard is only allowing for more flexibility. And so in getting, if the activity gets underway before the O&amp;M manual is finalized, you're still working to comply with your existing O&amp;M manual and focusing on the high hazards.
Rick, thanks for bringing that up. I was actually just gonna chime in on that exactly, and appreciate that. And Chris, I appreciate what you said earlier. I'm gonna continue to beat this drum that, yeah, we need to be out there early and often. This is a critical issue, you know, with a, you know, we do have some time, but not really, right? And things tend to take time to, to work out, and I don't want to be bumped up against this 2025 date and, you know, have issues with the recertification, because that has a cascading effect that I certainly don't want the district to be sort of in the crosshairs on. And so, Rick, maybe a question for you in terms of timing, not under, I don't understand the Central Valley Flood Board process for enforcement actions. But if you were to work backwards, you know, from a date that we'd want to have these encroachments cleared, and if it, you know, certainly we want people to take advantage of the incentive program, but it's likely that that won't be 100% effective and therefore will have to deal with at least an enforcement action or more. What does that process look like working backwards so that we make sure we're, we're doing what we need to do to line things up in the timeframe that you need to have these encroachments removed?
Yeah, that's, that's an important question. We have been talking about this at, at the staff level, and we talked about it with flood protection board staff. We haven't received feedback from them on exactly how much time they're gonna need. But, but let me say, I think a good analogy is SAFCA and the Flood Protection Board have been working in the pocket area on clearing encroachments on the land side of the levy in advance of the Corps' construction project. And, and through SAFCA's incentive program, they've had 100% compliance. None of those have been turned over for enforcement action. And part of the reason is the consequence of not participating in the voluntary is the homeowners incur a significant cost. When it goes through an enforcement action, the homeowner is picking up the cost of that enforcement action, and so it's extremely punitive. Now, you know, hopefully we'll have similar success, but in the event we don't, and, and a handful are turned over for enforcement action, we're gonna need no less than a year. And it could be maybe 18 months. So if you back up from, we really need to have this done by the end of 2024. The certifications for ULDC by statute need to be done by June 2025. And there's, there's just a, a lot of product preparation that prepare the certification package, get it through the, the city and council and the county board of supervisors. We need six months for that. So December of 2024, we need to be done. So the voluntary program really needs to be going strong by mid 2022, into mid 2023, and probably around mid 2023 to the end of 2023 would be the time I would expect we, to turn these over, any remaining ones to the board for enforcement action.
Well, those are timeframes I think, Kevin, I'm sure you're aware of with Allen. You know, when you guys are putting together this plan, that's gonna be critically important. And in addition, and I think I've said this before, but I'm gonna say it again. I think that, you know, our field crews, particularly you, Gabe, it's gonna be important to establish, if you haven't already, you know, start to establish those personal relationships with a lot of these folks that are encroaching, you know, that we have these encroachment issues with, because I think that that is one component that I think could make the process smoother. So, you know, to the degree that you're already doing it great, but, you know, if you're, if you're not, I certainly would encourage that, you know, a year and a half is not a lot of time.
Yeah, so, so Nick, we, we certainly appreciate that. We've been working with Rick pretty extensively as a certified engineer, and he feels comfortable with our program, you know, speaking and conversations with Rick. And to the point of establishing those relationships, we've been trying to work pretty, pretty extensively in meeting the needs on trash pickup. I mean, we did, on a weekend, one day, picked up trash for, you know, a group of homeowners up there on Garden Highway and just said, you know, essentially, we're there to help and, and be supportive. And, you know, Gabe's, Gabe's establishing those relationships currently, and we'll continue to do that. But you're right, we need to get out with Allen Strategic and formulate this game plan. And so, you know, now I wanted Rick here this morning to present to the board, you know, kind of what we're looking at. And now we, you know, essentially have our marching orders and know what to do. We'll probably be spending quite a bit of time on, on this over the next, like I said, six months on outreach. And then, you know, next summer, doing the vegetative removal. So Rick, if you're done, you can go ahead and, I'll take back the screen. Any other questions from any other trustees? Thank you, Rick, for the presentation. Very helpful. I do want to note that Tom Barandis has joined the meeting, and I think he did probably 15 minutes ago or so. So we'll put that in the record. Good morning, Tom. Any other questions for Rick or, or staff on the presentation on the SWIFT?
Thanks for all the work, Rick, and the staff. Thank you.
Okay, on to item three, public comment. If there's anyone from the public that would like to address the board on items not on the agenda, you may do so now. You have three minutes. Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to informational items. First informational item, as always, is the general manager's report. I do have two things to add. Somehow my bookmarks aren't working today. So I'll get to the page in a second. Just two, or three items to add to the general manager's report. Reach A on the Natomas Levy improvements. We're negotiating currently with the Corps. One of the kind of fatal flaws in our minds in doing the work on Reach A is they're scheduled to completely have Pumping Plant 1B offline for a period of a year or potentially longer, which would make us have to run Plant 1A. We haven't relied on Pumping Plant 1A for about 30 years for any flood, flood removal operations. And so we're a little bit concerned about the reliability of Pumping Plant 1A and not 1B is, you know, between 1B and Plant 8, those are the two plants we rely on most heavily. So we're currently working with the Corps to change the schedule or modify the schedule to have half a pumping plant 1B down at a time and still, you know, have half the pumping capacity available from 1B. We'll see how those negotiations go or our request goes with them. Our finance plan, MBS, provided us a draft of Phase 2.1 on Friday. We had a conversation with them on Wednesday. There's a few items as staff we need to address and get them some more data. But looking forward to probably having the draft of that plan wrapped up in the next week and then scheduling, you know, probably in about two weeks, scheduling a finance committee meeting to go through that. And then based on the finance committee meeting, we would determine whether we're ready to present to the full board in December, or excuse me, in November or December. And that would, you know, wrap up Phase 2.1 and then lead into And that would, you know, wrap up phase 2.1 and then lead into phase 2.2. Next week, we do have another call with MBS and we'll have Alan Strategic, you know, on that as well. So we can start formulating a game plan or a path forward for outreach and have some graphics and some information produced to accompany the draft phase 2.1 report. And then lastly, East Levy Road should have been reopened this week. However, last week they were, the core had scheduled a final walkthrough with agencies that needed to sign off on all the improvements. One of the agencies that was needed for sign off didn't show up to the meeting. We reached out to that agency's office and the meeting was rescheduled for yesterday. And then it got canceled by the core. So we're still waiting for the final walkthrough on East Levy Road. We're hopeful that that gets scheduled for next week and then East Levy Road can be reopened. Gabe, do you have any other update since we talked yesterday?
Yeah, I believe, let me look at my calendar here, I believe they rescheduled that final for next week, mid next week. So hopefully by the end of next week, we should have that road open. That's hopefully all parties attending the meeting, man. We're just waiting for one. So I'm hopeful that next, the end of next week, the road should be open.
Thanks, Gabe. Any other questions on the general manager's report?
I just want, Kevin?
Yes.
I just want to extend my congratulations to Mark Jenkins on his promotion.
Yeah, I will let him know. Yeah. So Mark came over about two years ago, well, two years ago from Natomas Mutual. He's performed very well. He's a, he's a, quite a character in the, the meeting rooms. We love Mark and he's done a lot of great work for us. So I will let him know, Deborah. Thank you.
Just want to celebrate our employees as much as we can.
Hi, Kevin. Sorry.
Go ahead, Alina.
Hi, Nick.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to follow up on the Meager testing results. I know we did not pass the Meager testing. So what are the next steps?
So, yeah, we're waiting on Jay Franco Electric to come out and diagnose the slices that pump plant number eight. That's the plant that did not pass the Meager test on three of the pumps. So he is currently on a project right now for another entity, but as soon as he's done with that, he's going to come over to pump plant number eight and finish the diagnosis of the slices. We're, we're assuming the slices is, is what's causing the, the issue. It creates a higher resistance. So he's going to diagnose that and let us know what, what he finds. So hopefully next week can get back out there and finish that, finish that diagnosis.
Yeah. And just, just so you know, Alina, the Meager testing, just because it failed, doesn't mean, it failed the Meager testing, doesn't mean that the pumps won't work. It means that there could potentially be a problem. So this is preventative, you know, kind of going in for a maintenance check. And so we're aware that a potential problem could arise. And so we're trying to address those slices. The pumps still run, they're still operational, but it could lead to, it's an indication that you're going to have failure. So that's why we do it every year. And so we're, we feel pretty good and then we'll get those slices fixed. So.
Hey, Kevin. With regards to the hydraulic model, I know we had an update and a schedule provided in May. Are there thing, are there any issues outstanding in relation to, you know, getting paid by the city and the county? I assume the agreements.
Done. We, we received.
Yeah.
And we've received payment from both the city and county. And, you know, the county paid half, essentially half of their, their agreed upon rate. They've already paid that and then they'll pay it in their next fiscal year as well. So we do have some, some of the data back. Need and Hunt's reviewing that, you know, to make sure the assumptions in the model that CESI has put together. So we're, you know, they're doing their peer review and providing, you know, comments back to Tom Plumber and his group. And I'm assuming that the city and county are doing the same on their end.
I, yeah, I'd probably want to validate that or verify that that is in fact the case. So.
Yeah, I'll check in with Tom.
Yeah. And then in terms of the project schedule, I don't, obviously don't have it in front of me. So I, hopefully we're, we're on track to meet that project schedule. So.
Yes.
Another important.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Well, to the degree we can continue pushing these other agencies, since we're sort of the clearinghouse here. Continue to, to encourage that on your part, Kevin. Thanks.
You bet.
Kevin, I had a quick question on the financial plan and the next steps.
Yes.
I'm just curious, have we talked, since the city of Sacramento is obviously looking to go out to it, it's exploring a 218. I don't know if anybody else got it, but the property owner survey, they're obviously looking at doing their own flood prevention measure. We talked to them about when they plan on doing theirs.
You know, I, I don't know the timing of theirs, Chris, but fortunately for us, MBS is working on that for them. And so I can talk to Greg, who's our primary contact with MBS. Next week, I'll find out what their schedule is. I didn't ask that question previously, but he did say, and I think they just started on that work recently. So, because I don't remember them saying they had that in their project when we hired them, what, a year and a half ago? So I'll check in with Greg and let you know, Chris.
Yeah, I just, from, from what they're doing, they're, they're already out there talking to the constituents as far as what, what their feelings are on, on a new flood, you know, 218. Seems like they're a little bit further ahead than us. That's what concerns me. So, okay.
Any other questions on the general manager's report? Okay, hearing none. On to operations manager's report. One thing new in Gabe's report for this month, we have included the drainage canal and ditch cleaning that's gone on. Just so, you know, obviously it's very, you know, detailed and probably hard to see on the screen, but it is in your pocket. And this is all the work that we've done and the reason why the activity was, was started and what we've done to address those. So we're also working with Meet and Hunt to put this into the RGIS system so that we can graphically demonstrate the areas that we've cleaned, just so you guys can see visually how much we've cleaned in any given year. And then we can also use it for our benefit too in operations and maintenance to be able to address certain areas the following year. So getting better at tracking where we're, we're doing that, you know, vegetation management and ditch cleaning. And then we'll be able to, to produce that for you guys graphically. Probably take a couple, maybe two months or so with Need and Hunt to get it into GIS, but that's our intent. Gabe, do you want to add anything to the, to your report?
No, just following up on the GIS. Yeah. Yeah, I've been working with them pretty extensively on trying to basically use our map. The whole, the whole effort is basically when we have rice water releases in previous years, our drains and base our facilities were impacted pretty heavily. So I want to get to a point when, working with the Natomas Mutual, asking when those fields are going to release, I can basically, with a pushable button, know what facilities of RD 1000 will be impacted as well as pumping plants. We can basically make sure those facilities are, in fact, in a good, in good working order. If we need to devote resources to make sure we have no flooding or make sure the pumping plants are operational. It's just, it's easier for us to determine what we need to focus on when rice water comes down to us. And along with O and M activities, but that's the, one of the main purposes to prevent flooding throughout the district. So it's, it's going to be a bit to get that all working, but I think it's going to benefit current staff. And, you know, as new staff come in that aren't familiar with the district, that'll be a good tool for them to build use.
Thanks, Gabe. Any questions for Gabe on his report?
Um, I have a question. In the ditch cleaning chart, understanding the nomenclature, I, I don't know how to identify what's what. But I'm curious, on this report, the site that the city is considering for the homeless encampment, does it appear on this report anywhere?
No. Are you referring to Rosencourt, Deborah?
Yes.
No, this, this is.
I mean, technically it's not a ditch or a drainage canal.
Yeah, no, Rosencourt is, is not on this list. This is basically all the drains and ditches that we have mechanically clean either aquatic vegetation and or silt. But, you know, no, Rosencourt is not on this, on this list.
In Gabe's report though, we do report on our activity on unauthorized encampment and our expense. And that's on page 28 of the board packet. It, you know, graphically shows how much we've spent year to date or since July on encampment cleanup specifically. And then just last, actually just this week, that number is going to increase, you'll see in, in next month's report. We did participate with the Central Region Water Quality Control Board and American River in cleaning up Steelhead Creek. We've been doing this for about four years now. We removed four 10-yard dump trucks of material in, in two days. And then American River did probably about the same in two days following us. So we did spend quite a bit of staff time cleaning up Steelhead Creek this week.
Do we have any way of isolating and identifying specifically what it takes for us to maintain that site? I'd, I'd be interested to know.
Maintain Rosencourt?
Yes.
We're not doing anything, we can, we can track that when we start to, you know, if we enter into an agreement with the city of Sacramento. But right now, the core and Safka are using that piece of property in particular, and we have no activity there in the last two years. So once the, once Safka and the core have left the site, then we can certainly start tracking that. Regardless of whether the, the city comes and we enter into an agreement with them to use that site or not, we can start tracking that separately.
Okay.
Hey Kevin, a couple of things. First, on the Steelhead Creek cleanup, you know, fortunate enough to serve on the Regional Water Quality Control Board. And I know a lot of kudos have been passed around for RD 1000s, you know, help and coordination on those efforts. So obviously they, they're not going unnoticed and they're really getting to the highest level. So I want to say thank you for that. Certainly it's a, a point of pride serving on both organizations. And then I forgot what the second thing was. Oh, yeah. So, no, no, I, I remember now. So not, it's not on Gabe's report, but there was a letter attached from Mr. Costa on LAFCO. I just want to be clear that that agenda item was last month. I mean, that, there's that deadline, right, that passed.
Yeah, Nick, so the, the nomination that was on last month's agenda was if any one of our trustees wanted to be nominated for that election, that nomination period has closed. And so obviously Mr. Costa has been nominated and is on the ballot, but we don't have to take action. In fact, at our November meeting, it'll be on the agenda. Because I haven't seen from LAFCO their ballot yet. And so that's why it hasn't been placed on the agenda. But it will be placed on the agenda for the trustees to vote on the special district commissioner seats.
Got it. Thanks for that clarification. Thanks.
Yeah, I received his letter and I just included his correspondence in this month's report, but no activity. Because he did reach out and he addressed it to the board. So.
Thanks.
Any other questions on operations manager's report? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to district council report. Rebecca?
Good morning. Relatively low key month. We've been assisting with compliance on 8361 and some guidance on that. This is the extension of the Brown Act, meeting flexibility and accommodations, as well as assisting on the negotiation of Kevin's contract, which will be discussed in close session.
Any questions for Rebecca? Hearing none. On to the consent calendar. I entertain a motion for approval of the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
A second.
Motion by Jones, second by Burns. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion's approved. On to item 6.1, insurance renewal. In the packet is the quote for insurance renewal. About two years ago, we, we investigated other insurance providers. Unfortunately for, for our business and for flood protection, there's not a lot of interest from the insurance community to provide this level of coverage. And so Water Plus Insurance or Allen County Insurance Services is pretty much the only game in town. And so we have added some new equipment, which obviously it, you know, the, the cost of the equipment's higher and therefore replacement value is higher. And our insurance rates go up a bit for that. But then normal insurance increases too, as far as liability goes. Our overall increase over the expiring contract is 13 and a half percent. Last year it came in, I think we had about a 10% increase last year. So, you know, I would suspect that we're going to continue to see insurance rates increasing probably about the same rate in subsequent years. So I would turn it over to the trustees if there's any questions or comments on the insurance renewal.
Move the item.
One second.
Motion by, have this second by Burns. All those in favor, say, oh, I'm sorry. Any public comment? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion's approved. Item 7.
There was an aye from Jones.
On approval, yes. Thank you. On the committee reports, any questions on the minutes from the committee reports? All right, hearing none. I would ask now, we're going to go into closed session. I'd ask for everyone to leave, anyone from the public not in closed session, go ahead and leave the meeting and you can join back in about five minutes and you'll be placed in a, in a waiting room until closed session's finished. So all you have to do is log off and then log back in, in about five minutes and the meeting will, it will resume once closed session's over. And I'll stay on the line, Rebecca, and help you. And then I'll jump off. Okay, so it looks like it's just us. Rebecca, I'm going to go ahead and make you the organizer. And then we're going to stop the recording.
This conference will now be recorded.
There we go. Thank you.
Okay, so the recommendation out of closed session is to move the personnel committee's recommendation to extend the contract three years. Any question?
I, I want to, want to clarify briefly and also to align, as we've discussed, the cost of living and merit increases with the same timeline that staff is on, the mid-year timeline.
Yes. Thank you, Rebecca. Yes, thank you Rebecca.
Rebecca, does that require a second?
Yes.
I'll second.
I get it by Nick. So we do a roll call?
Sure, uh, Jolene, will you take a roll?
Yes, trustee Gilbert.
Yes.
Uh, Lee Reader.
Aye.
Lee Reader, aye. Who else is left? Aptus, is he still on?
Aye.
Aye from Aptus. Berandis?
Berandis, aye.
Berandis, aye. Burns?
Steen.
Burns of Steen. Jones?
Aye.
Jones, aye. Aye, is it approved?
Motion's approved. All right, thank you, everyone. With that, our meeting is concluded, so, um, I guess a motion to adjourn.
Made by?
Gilbert.
Second made by?
Lee Reader.
Second by the Reader. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none. Have a good, uh, weekend and thank you very much for your time this morning. We'll talk soon.